Right, with Trinity Church is giving our invocation today. If you'd like to come forward, please. And everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Would you like me to do it first, or would you like me to pray first?
If you would pray first, that would be nice.
I will pray first, then. If I may read a scripture, the Lord said something very interesting as we're on the topic of prayer and the Lord. We're in First Samuel in the second chapter, verse thirty. God of all creation spoke and said, "I did promise that the branch of leave I would always be my priests, but now I say that I will honor those who honor me, and I will despise those who think lightly of me." And so according to this scripture and the fact that we are gathered here together to acknowledge and honor God, let us do that. And so, Lord, we come humbly before you, recognizing that apart from you, God, we can't do this, Lord, that as the mayor, she cannot do all she called to do, and this entire city council cannot be who they are called to be, the public servants, Lord. Lord, you also spoke in your word and said that if we would humble ourselves before you, that you would give us grace, but you would resist those who are in pride. And so according to your word, both in the Old and the New Testament, Lord, we are here to beseech you, Lord, to honor you first and foremost above everything. And we do thank you, God, that you have continued to give us grace. And so I do pray and ask that you would multiply it, that grace and peace will be multiplied upon each and every single city council member here, upon the mayor, and upon all of our public servants. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, Pastor Andrew.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames here.
Mayor Protim Philshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Mouton.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. We don't have any presentations or recognitions today. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda items one, two, or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you would like to speak on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. But right now, it's for one, two, and the consent agenda. Tom Bell, five oh five Orleans, Beaumont, Texas, item D on the consent agenda. Tom?
Yep.
Please.
Hope y'all can hear me through this mask.
Well, since you're talking, if you want to take it off, you can.
Thank you. Just to breathe a little bit.
I just have to talk and not talk, so I just learned to project right through it.
Well, I wanted to tell y'all, thank y'all for funding us again this year. It's been going to be twenty-nine years this year that we have been partners with y'all, and I hope that twenty-nine years from now, we're still doing the same. And I hope we're all here. I might not be, and some of us may not be, but let's take a stab at it and see if we can keep working together. We've enjoyed working with y'all for twenty-nine years and doing some of the wonderful things that y'all have done and that we've done together, and it's a team effort. We just appreciate y'all very, very much. I wanted to tell y'all, we had a great year. We, you know, with Corona and everything else, it's been kind of hectic. But we, I've actually been going to work every day. I don't like staying at home, and I got an empty building. I'm sitting heads up, felt pretty safe. But Lauren did a little bit of work at home for a couple of months. But we're back to full steam, and we've had a lot of things going on. It doesn't seem like, you know, people are still calling and asking about buildings. We've had a lot of people doing that with our website that's so popular through the THC. And we have a couple of investors right now that are talking to us about buildings. One of them from Amarillo, and one of them from Houston. But we're excited to, you know, be doing some of the things we're doing. But what I really want to do today is I left y'all a sheet about Dogtoberfest. We decided not to have it on the grounds this year, but we're excited about it because it's already turning out to be a pretty big deal. We're doing it virtually, and you can get online at dogtoberfestbeaumont.com and go over the rules. You can enter the contest. People on Facebook are going to vote to get that famous red fire hydrant if they can win first place. And we've already had nine thousand people on our Facebook looking at it. And it's a good opportunity, if y'all have a dog, to enter because a lot of times, people bring their dogs, and when they're up on the stage, the dog gets nervous and he doesn't maybe do the trick that he normally does. But now, this year, you've got plenty of time to go in the backyard and work with your dog and get him on film doing it just right, then send it in, and maybe he'll win. So once again, I just wanted to come and tell y'all, thank you very much for being our partners.
Thank you so much. We hope it's a successful drive-through.
Any questions from anybody on anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a good day.
You too. Andy Gardner, five hundred Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, item B on the consent agenda.
Here today to represent the Art Museum of Southeast Texas?
Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for y'all continuing to support the museum. I've been at the museum twenty-eight years now, so y'all have been supporting us way before I arrived. So thank y'all so much. COVID was challenging for us, especially on the education side. I'm the curator of education program. It was really challenging for us because we are linked with the school system. We are an extension of the school system. As many of you didn't know, we have fourteen educational programs. We service eighty miles in any direction from Beaumont. So especially in the rural communities, your pine lands, your jaspers. And our program relationship is tied with BISD. We have about ten programs with BISD, Art After School, which is our after-school program for fourth graders, our eighth grade program, which is with Odom Academy, our high school program, which is through our protege art competition in collaboration with Lamar University. We give out a scholarship to the first place and second place and third place winners of those competitions. So we were able to create, get through most of those programs unaffected. But once February hit, we had a lot of drawback, and we had to reinvent the wheel, kind of. Even this summer, we had to reinvent how we were doing educational programs. We partnered with Cops and Kids and Fire Museum for our August drive-through Family Arts Day, and it was a real success. We had over five hundred and two people drive through, over two hundred and six cars came through. And we practiced social distancing, so everything was in bags. So we handed everything, all the instructions to complete the art activities was in there, all the stuff they needed was in there. So we were really thrilled about that. In October, on the thirty-first, we're going to do our October drive-through Family Arts Day. Mr. Ames has been, it's called Eat a Bug.
Yep.
Bill Clark, pest control usually comes out and cook bugs. This year, they're going to do chocolate-covered bugs. And they're going to have a station, and we partnered once again with Ryan with Dinosaur Day will be taking place that day. Also, we have the Beaumont Public Library will be participating, the Fire Museum, the McFadden Ward House. So kind of social distancing in the museum parking lot, and cars will literally just drive through. So we're still trying to be an asset to the community, still reach out to the community. We're working still with BISD to formulate a plan to continue our programs. We have a plan in place with school returning full strength next week on the twelfth. We'll start working with virtual programs with them to continue our art after-school programs and so on. And we do have the museum expansion going on, the education wing. If you didn't know, it's probably, I would say, looks about forty-five percent done. They are now kind of putting in the wiring and everything. So that's going to allow us to even bring in more programs in the sense we can create social distance because we have a much larger space to do that with. So that's going to be a great help. Our exhibitions are, we have an exhibition up now in partnership with the Tyler Museum. We have some of their artwork on display, about sixty of their pieces on display at the museum. They have another, about sixty of our pieces from our permanent collection on display in Tyler. And then in the back gallery, we have part of our permanent collection on display as well. So, you know, thank y'all once again for supporting the museum and supporting the program that we're doing at the museum. We try to be a pillar of the community and a reflection of the community, using our programs to reach diverse crowd, creating diversity and inclusion for everybody in Beaumont. And without y'all's support, we would not be able to do that. So once again, on behalf of the museum, the many programs that we offer, the board of trustees, and all the volunteers that make the museum possible, thank you so, so much. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be delighted to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gardner. We appreciate everything y'all are doing.
All right.
No questions, council? Thank you.
Great job.
Alicia McKibben, sixty ninety-five Ventura Lane, Beaumont, Texas, item E on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you so much for your continued support of the Beaumont Heritage Society. I can't even express, especially now in the situation that we're in, how important it is to us as an organization, especially the John J. French Museum. Just to refresh your memory, the French Museum is the oldest fully restored home here in Beaumont. It was built in eighteen forty-five. And at the museum, typically, in a typical year, we would have our history-based summer camp, Camp Looking Back, in the summer, and that's where we immerse kids in what it was like to live here in the eighteen hundreds. As well as we have multiple annual events that are family-friendly, low cost, and centered around holidays. And those are the Easter egg hunt, the pumpkin walk, and haunted Halloween tour, and then the Christmas candlelight tour. So luckily, all those took place just fine in two thousand nineteen. They were a great success. However, this year, we got in, in addition, we have an outreach program called Heritage Happy Hour, and in that, we showcase historical assets within the city that we are not personally involved with. And we've had those in some of the city buildings as well, like the Julie Rogers Theater and Jefferson Theater, Terrell Historical Library. We did get that one in before the pandemic hit in February, but we obviously haven't conducted any of those this year as well. So we are trying to stay relevant. We've increased our social media campaign. We have opened for tours in July. So both the French Museum and the Chambers House are open for tours. We continue to work with the CVB, trying to attract tourists. Of course, it's rather trying at this point in time, but we won't give up. So in, at the end of this month, we are hosting a movie night on the grounds of the French Museum. It is going to be outside, socially distanced, near the French Museum Cemetery. And that starts at seven thirty and runs to eleven, and we're going to show Night of the Living Dead and Little Shop of Horrors. So hopefully, we'll get some people out. But we continue, last year, we had two thousand two hundred people visit. And we're here and ready when the pandemic is over and we can all move on. So thank you again so much for your help. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all very much. Questions, council? Thank you. Ryan Smith, six hundred Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, item C on the consent agenda.
And good afternoon. So again, on behalf of the Texas Energy Museum Board of Directors, I want to thank city council and the city again for the continued support. Everybody's been talking about years. I think for us, it's the same thing, going on thirty years now. So tremendous support from the city. As everybody else has said, two thousand and twenty's been a tough, interesting, and challenging year. And since last year, at this same time, our attendance was half of what it was in previous years. So we don't really give you one of those numbers, right, WL? We kind of want to just say we're going to look forward to a better twenty-one. And obviously, during this, our biggest season is during the summer. From March till August, when we were closed, where we opened on the first of August, you know, we were closed. And so that's our tourist season, that's our kid season with the schools. And then, of course, you had Lars. So we had, you know, we had all these closures in there. So obviously, that was tough on our visitors. But the good news is that we continue to work through these things and a lot of offline or online off-site production. And so we developed hands-on activities for kids that you could go on our website, and you could do these activities at home. We do, we have one-minute virtual museum tours. You can click on our website and get these little tours. And the good news is that our virtual resource has basically doubled. So we have almost nine thousand contacts through these virtual visits and tours. Last October, as Andy just mentioned, with the Art Museum, we had about fifteen hundred that came for last year's Dinosaur Day. And this year, it's going to be collaborative with the Art Museum and others on doing a drive-through. So they'll get bags of dinosaur goodies and crafts and things they can take home with them. We're still going to put your favorite papier-mache dinosaurs up on the lawn. So during the whole month of November, they can come by and take photographs with the kids. So we can do, we can do that on the lawn. Other collaborative events that we've done through the last year include the opening of the Cultural Arts District, that was back in November, the Community Science Day we did with the Children's Museum and the Art Museum back in November. And of course, we have our annual children's holiday party that was on in December. So those things, again, worked in the fall and winter, and then were working to the spring. So again, we continue to work very closely with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and bringing tourists. Where everybody's kind of looking toward a new direction on tourism during this time. But we think there's some exciting things going on and going to happen through all of this. We're going to come through this bigger and stronger, as they say. So again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you so much, Ryan. We appreciate you. Okay, if there's no other citizen who wishes to speak on these items, I'll close the floor. Counsel, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda for approval. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I know we've got five different nonprofits that we're looking at making a, just like a quarterly contribution to. And the pay skills on these things kind of vary all over the place. Can you kind of explain how we come up with what we're paying and how these individuals were selected?
Okay. Each, each one is different. Some receive just hotel occupancy tax money. Some receive a combination of hot money and general fund money. The dollar amounts, for the most part, have stayed the same, probably for, probably for, I'd say, ten-plus years. I have to go back and look at the history. But we've tried to keep the dollar amounts the same just because the hot revenue has not really grown that much. And these entities have been very good about going out and raising funds, knowing that, you know, the contribution from the city is valuable, but at the same time, we've tried to keep it, keep it the same. So I don't know maybe the history from the beginning, let's say, the Art Museum, Energy Museum. You have to meet certain criteria to get the hot funds. And only so much, certain percentages in the legislation can go, for example, to promote the arts. So it depends, you know, a lot of this was negotiated many, many years ago, as you heard, maybe twenty-five, thirty years ago.
All right, thank you.
And we own, y'all know, we own the Art Museum building, the city does. We own the Energy Museum building. So each one's a little different. Main Street rents a location downtown. The John J. French Museum, you know, they own that property, of course, and we just help them on an annual basis with operating expenses and so forth. So it's been a, it's been a collaborative effort for decades that's worked very well.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. First item, please.
Mayor Council, item number one is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Beaumont Firefighters Local Three ninety-nine. The proposed agreement is for a four-year period ending September the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. The major changes relate to pension contributions and wage increases. Currently, the city and the employee contribute fifteen and a half percent of each employee's salary to the pension fund. The proposed agreement requires the city to gradually increase the contributions to eighteen percent by October of two thousand twenty-three. And the employee will gradually increase their contributions to eighteen percent by October of two thousand twenty-two. The agreement also provides for wage increases of three percent effective upon signing the new agreement, three percent in year two, three percent in year three, and four percent in year four. I'd like to especially thank Jeff Neesum, who's the president, Cody Hinden, and Brian Hebert with the Fire Union. I'd also like to thank Chief Earl White, Todd Semino, our CFO. The union was great to work with, and we are very pleased to recommend approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of item number one. Can I have a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
Okay. Who said, were you the motion? And you read the second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? With there being none, seeming to be none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number two is to consider resolution approving multiple contracts for the purchase of traffic marking materials. We would enter into contracts with a group called Osborne Associates Incorporated out of Logan, Ohio, TransTech Transportation of Houston, and R&B Supply grows. Funds are budgeted for and available in the general fund and the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of number two. Is there a motion on this item?
Moved to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All, sorry, any discussion? Questions, discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion also carries unanimously. I'll open up the microphone shortly, but I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five five one point zero seven one of the Government Code, Southern Choice Consulting LLC versus City of Beaumont, Cause Number A dash two zero five, comma, five three three, considering matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with section five five one point zero seven two of the Government Code two it, property located at Major Drive between Delaware and Highway one oh five. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make general comments today, now's the time to do so. As I mentioned earlier, if you haven't already done so and you would like to speak, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, and the officer will give it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. As I mentioned earlier, we'd appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Tony Prados, ten ninety Avenue H, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
Wait a minute. I need the city clerk's assistance.
We have technical difficulties.
Well, I guess I can start talking, huh?
Guess we have on-the-job training here.
Trying to get my stuff together because I got a whole page and a half to go, so I just need to go. I'll, I'll be agreeable here.
Oh, we kind of know, so.
Watch.
It was brought up.
It's not the operator.
Are you sure?
Well, I don't think.
It was mentioned in one of the meetings about the Capitol Project program, which had been asked about certain areas to be investigated, I think. It may not be the correct word for that. But, but since Evelyn Lloyd was president, we've asked for the southern part of town, the drainage, you name it, and we've been having problems with sewage and you name it. And we've been trying and complaining and begging for help. Okay, so now it's coming to view that I-ten and Walden Road is asked to be cut and put on your agenda. Now, I'm asking you all, this was never a street before. All those streets out there by the mall was really never streets before. And y'all cut those streets, made beautiful roads out of them. We're still asking for help in the southern part of town, okay, in the minority community. So we've been, were requesting for this service since, it feels like forever, and nothing's been done. What if the people from the Pear Orchard, South Park, North End, and some of the West End were to hold our payments, which is our property tax, until something is done in these communities? And speaking to several people while just, just talking, I've received a few calls from lawyers out of Houston saying it is doable. And they said, "Hold, hold our funds in an account and filing discriminations against the City of Beaumont as our tax dollars are not being used and utilized in our communities." We're getting nothing done. One street every now and then, and then nothing, nothing else. I know when you say, I know when you sue the city, we'll be suing ourselves. I know that as a fact. Think about it. What are we getting out of our tax dollars now? Nothing. But the rest of the city is getting things done in their communities. So on some of, and on the backs of our dollars, when will it stop? Backed-up sewage, flooding in streets, and more. Sarah Street is a freeway now. Y'all gave us Sarah Street and now Washington Boulevard. Sarah Street is a freeway. Once you leave Lamar University and you come across that railroad track, it's a speedway. My grandbaby got killed on that street, so that's why it's to my heart. We need something done. I've mentioned, I've called Councilwoman Robin Mouton. I'm out of my home and I'm into the Pear Orchard neighborhood right now due to repairs from the flooding of my home. So I've asked Robin Mouton to look into these speed bumps, I ask. Why can't we get speed bumps on that street? That would deter a lot of that traffic. It would at least slow them down somewhat. Also, we, I've been talking with Singletary about the street and the speeding and the traffic. It's ridiculous. We have eighteen-wheelers passing on this street. This is tearing up our streets. And according to their officer saying, there shouldn't be a police office, I mean, there shouldn't be eighteen-wheelers on that street at all. What happened to it? Now we've got like Maverick, I don't hate to call her name, but it's a company out there in, in the Pear Orchard that's sending these eighteen-wheel, anytime they do work on the freeway, guess where they go? Sarah Street. So I'm bringing a problem, and I've got a solution to that problem.
Ms. Prados, if you'll just kind of bring it to a close because it's over three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with every problem, I try to bring a solution. With that, it's speed bumps, traffic control on our street. I may get a ticket myself on that street because you forget, you know? Thirty miles an hour is not very fast, but still, it's in the community. So they don't stop at the stop signs. From La Vaca, when you cross the railroad track is where all the racing began. And so we're asking for help on that particular street. So with that, I think if y'all need to talk to me later after, after the meeting, I'd be glad to do that. We're getting ready to beautify Sarah by doing Christmas decorations where this would be like in Nederland. When you drive down in a particular part of Nederland, you see all the beautiful. That's what we're getting ready to do on Sarah Street. So, and I've mentioned that to Robin to see if we can see about what we can do to get this helped and get this straightened up. Please, we've been asking. We have been begging for years.
Thank you.
So this may be a viable thing for us to do is to sue. Although we're suing ourselves, but yet and still, we're not getting nothing.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Prados. And maybe you could visit with Councilmember Mouton later because we did talk quite a bit about South Park this morning at a work session and some streets in South Park, two of them actually, and that are very big projects. projects. If we get a grant. And as far as the Dallin extension that you mentioned, that's just on the capital plan. That's not funded. It's not set to go forward at this time. Okay. All right. There's nobody else that would like to speak? Okay, if there's no one, I will move to council member comments. And would you like to start, Councilmember Mouton?
I would. Thank you, mayor. We had a workshop this morning, and the workshop had a lot of the details of which Ms. Prados was speaking about on today. One being a project for flooding, which covers three of the main streets in the Pear Orchard, Sarah being one. Also, I even mentioned to Chief Singletary today, one of the citizens that had been calling her in reference to some streets. And I think everyone here can attest to the conversation that was brought up. And it was, again, what Ms. Prados mentioned about Sarah Street and some of the problems that we're having, not only on Sarah, but Washington, and with our homeless situation. So, there are a lot of situations that may appear to not be addressed. But I can attest that they are being addressed. And on a regular basis, I do have citizens calling me in reference to several things in the ward. And drainage and, of course, sewage has been a problem across our city. And it's nothing foreign, not only to Beaumont, but to most cities. And it's a problem. It's an ongoing problem. But nevertheless, it's a problem. And when it's your problem, it's even worse, because then you have to deal with the mess of it. And I'm no stranger to it, because I've spent one of my Saturdays doing the same thing, and it's not fun. It's not fun at all when you're having to clean up all of that. So, I can say that it is being addressed. A lot of times, things that are being addressed, you don't always see an immediate result of it because of things that we're required to do as a council. But I can tell you that after today, that the workshop that we had, that those things are being addressed. And so, I feel really, really good about it, especially with three of the main problems being addressed, with drainage in my ward. Also, another thing that I'm looking forward to is community policing that we're gonna go back to, seeing officers in our community and on the streets. And hopefully, some of the speeding and some of the things that are going on. I know a lot of people look at Washington Boulevard just what it is as a boulevard. But when you live in a resident right off of a busy street or a major street such as Washington Boulevard, it's hard to just get in and out of your neighborhood, especially when you're trying to, you're at a dead stop, a stop sign, and trying to come off, come out to cars that are going forty and fifty miles an hour. And you're sitting at a dead stop trying to get out. That's something that is definitely being addressed. And Sarah Street, it is. Sarah Street is just an open freeway. And I grew up in that area. My grandmother lives on the corner of Sarah and Lou Street. So, we have a family house that's there. It's been there for ninety-something years. And so, I'm quite familiar with the speeding. All I know is that patrol needs to be there. And you don't want to send the police out there, but you can't afford to have citizens to be at risk and children walking the sidewalk with a school right there on Sarah Street. And it's almost like an accident just waiting to happen. So, the residents of Sarah and the Pear Orchard, please know that it is being addressed. And Ms. Prados, thank you so very much for coming, and we will continue to discuss it. Thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Samuel.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete.
Thank you, mayor. A couple of weeks ago, we were talking about a number of different things as it related to COVID and opening up and trying to be responsible. And I made the point that it's incumbent upon all of us to be proactive as it relates to our own health and to think through things, and to go see your doctor regularly to make sure that things are what they should be. The reason I say that is earlier this year, my good friend, my great friend and terrific Dr. George Thomas, I went in to see him, and he said, you know, your PSA's a little high, WL, and I want to watch that. And I said, you're the man. So, he gave me some prescription drug, and nothing really happened. So, he said, let me do this one more time. And he said, it's still not doing what it should be. And it wasn't that high. That's what, so, and that's why I want to tell you what a great Dr. George is. My PSA really wasn't that high. It was less than seven. And there are people that are ten and twenty, don't have any issues at all. But he said, I'm gonna send you over to, on one of our good friends, Denny Harris, who's a urologist, and let him check this thing out for you. And so, I did. And so, Denny ran, you know, the PSA tests they do. And he said, WL, I think we need to take a biopsy. So, he did. And he came back and said, WL, you have prostate cancer. It's stage two. It's progressive. It's aggressive. On the Gleason scale, it's a nan. And I said, well, so what do you suggest? Because those of you that know me, I don't worry about stuff. If Jesus said, don't worry, I ain't worrying. And he said, well, I want you to get with Dr. Miles, Brian Miles, one of the world-renowned urologists over at Methodist. And so, I did. And the day that Sheena's funeral, and the reason I wasn't there is because I was visiting with Dr. Miles on evaluating when we could schedule surgery. And so, we talked, and we scheduled it. And so, last, two weeks ago, after I stayed here till six o'clock for our executive session, I was on the operating table the next day in Houston, Texas. And Dr. Miles, who is, as I said, a world-renowned urologist, removed my prostate. And after it was all over, he's, and this is the great news, after it was all over, he said, tell you what, WL, it couldn't, it was perfect. It couldn't go on any better. We got everything. And I'd already taken a bone scan and lymph node and everything else. And so, there wasn't really any issues there. And last week, when I missed the meeting, it's because I had to go to Houston and remove a catheter. And for those of you that never had to wear one of those, I hope you don't ever have to. But it's awfully inconvenient. My daughter Suzanne says, Dad, you know, you always look on the bright spot. Is there any bright spots to wear in a catheter? I said, yeah, you don't have to wake up in the middle of the night to go to the bathroom. And, but anyway, so for the last couple of months, this is some of the things that I've been dealing with, that the only people that really knew this was my family, and Shereen, of course. And she's done a wonderful job, because, you know, with the sickness and health and, you know, and all the things, you don't really realize it until you are sick, how important it is to have a partner that's gonna really help you. But the reason I said that, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. My mother died of breast cancer. Cancer's real. I mean, we've been so focused on COVID, we forget there are other things going on out there. It's so important for all of us to get to our doctors on a regular basis. And I go see George. I mean, I see him a lot more often, but I go see him regularly every three months. And you've got to take that kind of responsibility and go look after yourself. Those doctors are brilliant. They're smart. They want to help you. But they can't help you if you don't go in. And with all the things that we've talked about, several of us are on that gift of life board with our wonderful friend Regina Rogers, that we want people to get tested. We want people to get tested. We keep saying that over and over again. But it's so important, because if you don't, you don't know what you're dealing with. And so, today, I wanted to make the point that it's so important for every single one of us to visit with our doctor regularly and to ensure that something just out of the blue, because there's no, quote, cause for prostate cancer. I mean, it happens. And we have, the bright spot is, if it's found soon enough, the chances of a complete recovery is very significant. But Julie Richardson, we're gonna, you know, we've had that walk for her. She had ovarian cancer, and she didn't know it till it was too late. So, I encourage all of you, if you haven't done that, please take the time to do it. It does make a difference. And I appreciate all the help from my family members and the prayers, because it does make a difference. When I say pray for us, I really mean it. And we have to deal with each other. And, you know, sometimes it isn't always as positive as we would like. But with God's help, we can get better. And I know we want to do that. So, that's it, mayor.
Thank you, council member. And we're glad that your surgery worked very well. Councilmember Geltz, y'all?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to commend Councilman Pete for being transparent and sharing his situation with everybody and using that to encourage everyone to watch their health. And our prayers will continue to go out to you as you continue to recover. And I just commend you for doing that and encouraging the citizens to pay attention. So, well done.
Thank you. Councilmember Geltz, sorry.
Councilmember Pete, thank you again for that. And I will be calling my physician. It's a timely reminder. It's something that a lot of us just might not think about like we should. And I appreciate that, and we'll continue to say our prayers for you on that. So, well done. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything, Paula? Okay. All right, there's nothing else. And we do have an executive session now. So, thank y'all for coming. We now will recess into executive session.